Okay. Want to call our commissioners meeting order for March the 17th, 2020. And before we begin, I need a motion to approve Mr. Joe Gurley to be on a phone conference today with us. I'd like a motion, please.
So moved.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we're unanimous. Okay. Like to remind everyone that to silence your cell phones this morning. If you may see a little bit of difference in our procedures today based on the coronavirus recommendations, and we will deal with that as we go along. Today, we have our invocation by Dr. Glenn Phillips, Senior Pastor, First Baptist Church of Goldsboro. But before we, before Pastor comes and has the invocation, I want to take a second and just explain to the public and to the commissioners how this came about. You may be asking the question, Pastor Glenn has been here two times in a row to do our invocation. Well, let me say that on March the 1st, the Sunday before Commissioner Bell passed away on Monday, I was in church and I felt my phone vibrate and I looked and it was 11:30 in the morning, on Sunday morning, and Commissioner John Bell was calling me. And I showed it to my wife and I said, you know, it's very unusual for him to call me on a Sunday morning, but I did call him back after church about 2:30 Sunday afternoon, and he did not answer the phone. So I said, maybe he's taking a nap. Sunday night about 8 o'clock, I remembered that Mr. Bell hadn't called me back, so I called him and he answered the phone. And I said, you doing okay today? He said, yes, I'm having a good day today. And he said, the reason I called you is that I would like to ask, to see if you would ask Pastor Glenn Phillips to come back again and do our invocation. He said, I really, I really get a lot out of his invocation. I've known him for a long time. We go back a long ways, and I would like for him to come back to do the invocation at the next commission meeting. And I said, okay, Mr. Bell, I will certainly get up with Dr. Phillips and see what his schedule is. Little did we know, the following day, Commissioner Bell would pass away. So at this time, it's my privilege to introduce Dr. Glenn Phillips to come and do our invocation in reverence and in memory of Commissioner John Bell and at his request, Dr. Phillips.
I know you all have a lot of important business today, so I don't want to be long. But before I pray, I'd like to take just a moment of personal privilege, Ray said I could, or Mr. Mayo, I guess, in this situation. 22 years ago, I came to Wayne County to be the pastor at First Baptist Church here in Goldsboro, and it's been a blessing each and every step of the way. It has become my home. My parents, my mother's gone now, she was already living here when I moved here. My brother and his wife, Jerry and Donna Phillips, live here. And who would have dreamed that my two sons now, in their 30s, would have married Wayne County girls and now also live here? My youngest working for the county at the senior center, Rob Phillips, and my oldest working for the city of Mount, town of Mount Olive, in their department there. So it was a dream beyond dreams. But not long after I came here, John Bell was elected to serve in this position as county commissioner. And Mr. Bell and I met in some various capacities, and John and I, I wouldn't really call us friends, because friends do more than what we've done, but we became people with, I think, like-minded hearts and minds. And Mr. Cromartie, you and I as well have spoken by phone before about issues in our county, and I'm grateful. And so today, I come, I'll be honest with you, I would have turned Ray down today. There's 600 churches in Wayne County. You don't need to hear from the one pastor back here behind you on a regular basis. But there's not much John's ever asked me to do that I did not do, or to pray about that I did not pray about. And so it is in his memory today, and because of his life lived among us, that I come. And in this particular time in our world, I pray my prayer will offer us some of the faith needed to deal with the issues ahead of us. When Ray asked me, he said, I didn't tell him, I started, my wife retired from Wayne Memorial, and I started to bring one of the masks with her that she brought me home to wear at lawnmower, back when masks were nothing, you know, you could just get a mask anywhere. But I did not, and I pray that as we go to God now, that we remember John Bell, and that we remember that this virus reminds us of our, of all of our connectedness to one another, and how in that we remember the call to care for each other. And thank you for the opportunity, John. Let's pray together. Holy God, we gather here this morning and we thank you. We thank you for your constant presence in our lives, even when we are not seeking it or aware of it. And we are thankful that we know that you are a loving and compassionate God above all, and that love and compassion is for all people. On this day, I remember in gratitude the life of John Bell, a life of dedication and commitment to our community, a life of wisdom and compassion for all people, a life filled with the willingness to work with everyone for the betterment of your world. May our community continue to be led by persons who place love and compassion, true wisdom, dedication, and unity, and most of all, every person above ourselves, that we may be a community filled with your strength and wisdom. In this particular hour, in our world where we face things we've never faced before, where we face the issues of the coronavirus and the disunity it could bring, where we face loss of health and life, may we choose as our country has always chosen, faith over fear and unity over disunity. God, may we practice diligence in our daily lives as the health experts advise us, and may we also trust in you, that we may find in this moment a moment of true faith, true statesmanship, and real citizenship. Amen. Thank you for the extra moments today, commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Acoch, you have the pleasure of the lead.
Yes, before we stand, though, I got a couple of comments to make. As always, when I do the flag, I always mention our men and women in uniform, and certainly they are in our hearts today. But we're facing a very difficult situation in our nation, in our state, in our county right now with this virus that's going around. And someone else that we need to remember is our first responders. They are, they are taking a great risk with the profession that they're in right now, because they're going to be the first ones in. They're, they're fighting the battle here at home. Our service men and women are overseas, but our first responders, they're here at home. They're going to be the first ones in, they're going to be the first one exposed, and all of them need to be in our prayers. They're, as far as I'm concerned, their uniform right now, which should always be, means just as much as our men and women in uniform, our EMS people, our fire departments, our law enforcement. This is going to be a great challenge for them, and we need to keep them in our prayers and probably show them more respect than we do sometimes. If they're standing in line somewhere, let them get in front of you. If you've got an extra dollar in your pocket and they're buying some food or something, pay for it. We've got to show our gratitude to them because they are sacrificing so much right now. Thank you all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Acoch. This time, we have the approval of the minutes from our February 18th, 2020 meeting. It's been a long time since we met. I have a motion for approval of the minutes at this time.
So moved.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, sir.
You in favor of the minutes, approval of the minutes on the last meeting?
I'm in.
Okay. Motion carries. Mr. Honecker, discussion and adjustment of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No walk-ons at this time, however, we would like to move, currently, public comment is listed near the bottom of our agenda, and we would like to move public comment back up under the appointment committee report.
Any commissioners have any comments or changes to the agenda? Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Commissioner Gurley, your vote?
Move.
Okay. All right. Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Honecker?
I've been asked, and I feel very honored to read this, on behalf of the board and staff, with respect to honoring our friend and compatriot, John N. Bell. We have asked that his family attend today, but they have been tied up, but they are aware that this resolution will be passed and that it will be presented to them. I believe Carol will be dropping this by in person today. So with great honor, I would like to read this resolution. Resolution 2020-10, a resolution honoring the life of Commissioner John N. Bell. Whereas John N. Bell was born in Sampson County, North Carolina, and whereas John N. Bell was educated in Sampson and Wayne County Public Schools, graduating from Dillard High School in Goldsboro, North Carolina, and whereas John N. Bell attended Shaw University in Raleigh, North Carolina, earning a BA degree in Business Management, Economics, Public Administration, and received the honor of cum laude graduate, and whereas John N. Bell loved his family, his community, his country, and most importantly, his God. And whereas John N. Bell achieved success in three careers, serving honorably for 20 years in the Air Force, including a year in Vietnam, Vietnam, and retiring as a Master Sergeant, serving 20 years with the State of North Carolina in the Probation and Parole Division, including as the first DWI parole treatment facility manager in the state, and retiring as the District 8 Judicial District Manager, Division of Adult Probation and Parole, and faithfully serving his community for 19 years and three months as a Wayne County Commissioner. And whereas John N. Bell leaves to cherish his memory, his wife, Annie King Bell, his daughter, Renita Bell Cole, his grandchildren, and many more beloved family and friends. And whereas John N. Bell will be missed for his intense fellowship, his innovative ideas, his fearless commitment to the community that he loved, and his ability to see beyond lines and colors. And now, therefore be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners wishes to honor the life of their fellow Commissioner, retired Master Sergeant, John N. Bell, and extends their deepest sincerities and condolences to his family and friends. Adopted this the 17th day of March, 2020.
Okay. We have a motion on this resolution?
So moved.
Okay.
Let's hold on.
That's all.
That's all.
Okay. Motion. Okay. Motion is all together.
So moved.
Okay, we got it. Is there any comments or discussion? Mr. Gurley, do you have any comments you'd like to make about Commissioner John Bell this time?
Yeah, I would like to say that the resolution just really speaks very highly of Mr. Bell, and he speaks very well, his many years of service to our country, he's served in the United States Air Force, North Carolina Probation and Parole, and the more than 20 years of service to the county government. And he was so instrumental in so many things that we see today, and will continue to see through the years to come. Some 20 years ago, whenever he came on the board, one of the things we did, we did a merger of County of Mount Olive, City of Goldsboro, and Wayne County to a countywide pyramid service. We also did a countywide merger of our 911 service. And as you see there, we talked today about more and more construction of EMS buildings and 911 buildings and new construction and technology that continues to grow, and he was very instrumental in that and had vision to what we were doing and what we needed to do. So my thoughts and prayers with Mr. Bell's family.
Thank you, Mr. Gurley. Any other comments from?
Mr. May?
Yes, Mr. May.
I met John long ago when I had a real job, and when I was running the employment service, and I was, actually had a job, I was working in the prison system with the employment service, and that's how I originally met him. And as today as it was then, he was as an honorable person I have ever met in my life. He cared about his county, he didn't care about politics, it was Wayne County first in his family and his God. We miss you, John. Take care.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Acoch.
I was going to say mine to the last, but I'll go ahead now. We're going to miss that man. He did so much for different agencies and departments in the county that they don't even realize he was doing it. One example is our volunteer fire departments. John lived in the city, the volunteer fire department didn't cover his, but I've heard him say more times than one, don't mess with the fire department, don't mess with the fire departments. And anything that come up, he was always for it. You know, they may not, some of them may not even realize that, but he was a strong supporter of them. And also, as many of y'all know, as he says, me and him had some intense conversation a few times. Because when we walked out that door back there, we were still friends. He was entitled to his opinion, just like I was entitled to mine. But he taught me one thing. He told me one day, he said, Wayne, he said, you know, we've got differences of opinions. He said, you ever thought about that both of us is right? And I mean, really, and that, that, think about that. You can have different opinions and both of them be right. But John Bell was a great man. And also, I want to, I want to say a thank you to Haskins Funeral Home. They did a fantastic job on his funeral. I mean, it was, it was, it was, you said there were goosebumps during the whole thing because they did a fantastic job, and I just wanted to thank them for what they did. John, we're going to miss you. Thank you.
Any other comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I would like just to ensure this, the pastor said that he had known John for such a long time, and I think maybe just to paraphrase what he said just a little bit, as with so many of us, we're not buddy-buddy. But we have our friendship based upon oftentimes what we do, working to try to make things better for our constituency all around Wayne County. But John and I had a habit of calling each other almost every day. And when you get in the habit of talking to someone almost every day, it puts a hole in your, in the absence of that opportunity. I think probably, when I became fully awake this morning, probably one of the first things I thought about was, because John has had some challenges recently, I couldn't help but think about, is he going to be, subconsciously, I couldn't help but think about, is he going to be to the meeting today, until my mind refocused on the fact of what today means. He will be missed by all of us on a daily basis, but this is what I want the public to understand and to miss. John had a strong opinion of things. He didn't make a lot of speeches about it, but he had a strong opinion. And as I shared with the attendees at the funeral, he had a good sense of humor. But oftentimes, it was designed to break the ice, and oftentimes, it may not have been recognized in the initial stage of what he may say. But his motive was to make sure that this board was productive and that we move forward and we move forward in the air of friendship. And I didn't say buddies, but I did say friendships. And history will be the judge of whether or not future boards can work as friendships for the citizens. You don't have to be buddies, but friendships oftentimes is designated by how cordial we can be. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. May.
Well, I was taken back by, years ago, I had a reputation of being a rebel rouser.
You still do.
And when I came on the board, I sat right there where Mr. Acoch is, and John sat in his gentle chair there. And we met, and we were distant, so to speak. But at that, I came in here the next meeting, and there was a piece of tape over there. And I said, what in the world is this? And John said, you just stay on your side over there, and I'll stay on my side over here. Now, I say all that again to say this. Politics has gotten very caustic in America, very caustic. There are those that are on the Democrat side of the aisle, and there are those on the Republican side of the aisle, and the two shall not mix almost. And that's bad. That is so bad. And John and I are the flip side of that. John and I together worked many, many projects together. Without John helping, there's a lot of things in this county that would just would not have happened, would not have happened. So you don't necessarily have to have the same political philosophy to be able to work across the aisle and get things done. John, I certainly will miss you. There were many chats that we had, and I'm sure you're in a better place today. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, my comment about Commissioner Bell is, when I first came on this board, John was sitting at that end seat there, and I was sitting about where, well, actually where Mr. Cromartie's sitting. John taught me, the first day, he taught me one thing, and he said so. He would back off over there when we had a vote, and he would show, he said, you've got to learn how to count to four, son. You've got to learn how to count to four. He taught me that, and it was a very valuable lesson. John and I, as some of us commissioners, we had our times when I first came on the board, but over the last two years especially, actually since 2017, John and I became good friends. He called me and I'd call him at least once a week. He's contributed so much to this board to bring it together, you just can't put a price tag on it. One thing you could say about John Bell, you always knew where you stood with him. And he said, when we sat on that, when we sat on that commission board, we should, there should not be any parties involved. We are commissioners, and if we have a disagreement, it's already been said, when we walked out of here, we would hug each other and say, I'll see you tomorrow. So, John, we're really going to miss you, and I know that the family wasn't mine, I've already shared this, but as a last thing, I've got, I've got voicemails on my phone, and I looked in my history from Commissioner Bell since 2017. I have not deleted. The last, the last mobile message that he left me on Sunday morning before he passed away on Monday, when we were at church, I want to share this with this board as a last tribute to Commissioner John Bell.
Great. John, give me a call when you get this message. Thank you. Bye-bye.
That was the message that you heard every time from Commissioner John Bell. Rest in peace, my brother. Okay. We have a resolution, 2020-10, a resolution honoring the life of Commissioner John N. Bell. We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Commissioner Gurley.
I approve.
Okay. Motion is unanimous. Okay, let's take a deep breath so we can move on. Okay, Mr. Acoch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next on our agenda, under special presentation, is an update from our Animal Services Director,
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
I wanted to speak with y'all about a change of operations with animal control and the animal shelter. February 3rd, we changed our hours from a five-day, 10-hour working day to a five-day, eight-hour working week. The reason I went to change the hours, being that our full-time employees only worked four days a week because of not getting overtime, we were very short-staffed, especially on Mondays and Fridays. Mondays and Fridays are our busiest, call volume and our busiest with visitations for adoptions. I could see the stress of the employees picking up where their other employees would be off that day. I could see it harder for us to handle all the calls that we were getting on those days that we would only have two or one officer. So I went ahead and changed the hours to 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. The concern that I did have at that time is that we would shorten our adoptions Monday through Friday an hour and a half. And so far, it has only been a month that I have this record, but we actually ended up going up 17 adoptions from last year during the month of February 3rd to March 3rd. I'm very excited to see that we have 17 more adoptions. I know it's only been one month, and I will definitely monitor that throughout the year to see if that's something that I do need to look into changing because we certainly want to get animals adopted. We are all working very hard to make sure that it does not affect our outcome of these animals, and I can see the biggest difference already in all the employees there, and with solving calls within that day of them being called in, and also with the cleanliness of the animals and the building, and us being able to spend time more with the animals not being short-staffed. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Oh, Mr. Chairman. Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
I was still kind of reeling here, so I'm not sure I comprehend exactly what you said, but did I understand you say that within the last month, you made a change and moved from a 10-hour day to an eight-hour day, five days a week?
As far as the employees being there, yes, sir. As far as the employees being there, yes, sir.
Now, I'm shocked to hear that because I thought this board had put in place a policy that all employees would be on five days a, five days a week. Um, but you're saying that as early as a month ago, your department was operating on 10-hour, four-day work weeks.
Yes, sir. We were there five days a week, but we would have-
That doesn't make any difference. Employees were supposed to be converted over to five days a week, 40 hours a week.
When, when we made the change, you know, there were, you, remember, we had some departments that were not there. We made the change, uh, and it was to change everybody officially, uh, January 1st.
Exactly right.
Right.
Well, this was done here because it was just done a month ago. So are there any other departments that we have on this? My goodness, it is hard to get out of this 40-hour, uh, four-day work, uh, we, we, I mean-
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Alright, so this was the last.
Right, right. And, and there, there were some scheduling issues and, and like, we had some scheduling issues with the Health Department.
Well, just, just look what he's accomplished in one month.
Right.
Now going to five days a week, we've got, adoptions are up, employee morale is up, everybody's happier. So I don't understand what the pushback is in regards to conversion, but thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll hush.
I, I just want to ask, make sure I'm on, I think we all sort of reeling from the last few minutes. This has been a positive, uh, I will agree that this is positive.
Oh, yeah.
Sometimes.
Yes, it's a very, yes, sir.
And, and the, uh, and the conversion of conversation and, and maybe a vibe that you pick up, I just want to make sure that this will, it turns out to be a positive move on your part and so there's an improvement in the department, Mr. Man.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I, I just-
And if I may say, Commissioners, we were hoping to do this January 1st, but they wanted me to make sure that I advertised enough before I made this change. Right. So it did not affect visitors and callers. Right. That is my fault more-
Remember, this is a department that is on call 24 hours a day. It's not a, open the door, shut the door, they never respond.
Yes, we are in the building 58 and a half hours a week until we made the change. Now it's 48 and a hour, half-hours a week as far as cleaning up the animals. And the, the biggest issue also, a, a, as Graham said, we wanted to make sure we advertised it because we were changing the adoption hours and we didn't want people to say, hey, I came in, you, all of a sudden you changed hours, I came in and there was nobody there. So we did give it 30 days to change the adoption hours on that.
We're digging the hole.
I do have a question. And you said, and adoptions are up, but I thought the Saturdays were always the big day.
Oh, man. We are very busy on some Saturdays, but I could not see a change within that one month and I know it's just one month, but we are very busy some Saturdays and I may need to look into longer in the Saturday adoptions.
So you are doing, you are doing adoptions on Saturday?
Yes, sir. We are open every Saturday, 10 to 12:00.
Okay, I just didn't quite understand that.
Yes, sir.
Any, any other question?
He's gonna put in his budget this year for a horse and a saddle because you gotta start running the cows. That's an inside joke.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's an inside joke. Mr. Chairman, one last comment. I did not even give the impression what a great report that was because it was a good report and I apologize for, in any way, taking away for the great job you're doing.
Right. He's like, it really is and, and, and Graham's been here a little over- Yes, sir. February 25th made a year. Made a year. Seems like two months, it's been- Uh, great, Graham's done an incredible job in really changing the culture that we've had, uh, at Animal Control and, and we're just very glad that he's here and the job he's doing.
And just to add, just a little closure to this, that's why I want to make sure that the end result was positive because sometimes when we're dealing with our colleague, Joe Doherty, he's not quite sure which way he's in.
I would find my confidence. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with y'all today and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is special recognition of Wayne County Sheriff's Office staff members Captain Sean Harris and Jamie Sturgill and information technology staff members Chris Stone and
All right. Well, I don't know how convincing I was with my little white lie about getting these guys here. Uh, I think they caught on to it a little bit, maybe it been the announcement, but I wanted to bring these four ladies gentlemen up here, um, because we have been working on a project for, let's just call it two years, uh, to get our RMS, our records management software, our jail management software updated, uh, from some old, uh, legacy equipment or legacy software we were using before. And it has been, uh, quite an undertaking, uh, while there have been a lot of people involved from, uh, other parts of the Sheriff's Office, um, finance, um, you could go on the county manager's board, uh, you guys have definitely seen us through the other side of this. Um, but these four in particular have been every day for that time, uh, implementing, working with vendors, testing, um, going back, finding issues, getting those resolved every day, sometimes at night, working with training, uh, staff members, uh, getting, getting all of our law enforcement, not just our Sheriff's Department, but all of our municipalities' law enforcement trained up so they can put good tools in their hands, give them the most up-to-date information and to make that easier for them so that they can just go about, do their job and not think about those types of things and any, uh, shortcomings we had with our, maybe with our old software we just didn't have. Uh, but I do want to have those four guys come up. Y'all pull one up, I would certainly appreciate it. Um, without these guys, I definitely don't see, uh, where we are, uh, as far as this software. And, uh, and they have been an integral part of making sure that that happens over the last, like I said, two years. Um, so I'm gonna give these to Sheriff's Office to help me. Our first orders were, uh, Chris Stone. I wanted to, uh, give him this, uh, he is, obviously for these other folks have been, uh, really just a key part of what we've been trying to do, uh, has, has, has seen us through the other side and it has, has really helped these guys. I'm sure they can attest to that, that really worked hard to get us through and, uh, make sure that everything goes smoothly in here in the future.
Chris, Chris, you, you gonna have them come up after to have a, a photo?
Okay. Next one's for Jamie Sturgill. I didn't know Jamie very well before this started. We have gotten to know each other pretty well. Uh, she is a dynamite to work with, uh, she is absolutely dedicated and finds a problem with some software, uh, to let vendors know and, uh, Sean and, uh, Jamie have worked out really well as far as helping us out and has definitely assisted Justin through this and, uh, I appreciate our efforts. Next one's for Captain Sean Harris. Again, I didn't know him too well before this all started, but we have definitely gotten to know each other the last couple of years and, uh, he has been a huge help, a great resource, kind of boots on the ground to let us know how things are going and, uh, gives us an insight for what the deputies deal, law enforcement really are dealing with and it's really helped us out through a vendor course and, uh, it's been a great asset to us throughout this journey. Thank you. Last but not least, our Sheriff IT Liaison, Justin Jones. There you go. Um, he's at it every day, uh, and he is, he's showing a lot of work on those and, and again, kind of that boots on the ground, seeing what the deputies are seeing. Um, and when this, this project, uh, came about, he was all over it and it really worked to find any issues we might have and any ways we can make improvements and obviously we're engaged with, uh, Chris on that and I certainly appreciate his efforts.
Ryan, last, let's, uh, right quick.
Oh, you should.
Since I did come back, you-
He wanted me to hand them out first.
Yes, yes. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, these folks have just been tremendous asset to this county and thank you for allowing us to upgrade our, uh, our record management system, but it, no matter how many upgrades you have, you don't have people that can implement it and it's no good to you and these are the folks that really pushed forward and thank you.
And, and before the sheriff just disappeared back, uh, I, I would want to just do a little bit of shout-out to the Sheriff Department and the relationship that I, I'm glad to see what I've always wished for and hoped, that the Sheriff Department and our IT Department would work real close together so as to keep an eye on the unsavored characters that lurk somewhere in the dark animals of, uh, of cyberspace and, and, uh, and, uh, Captain Sean Harris. I, I know, he, he knows what I'm talking about and I hope I don't need his help in, in, in the future endeavors, but I just want to say, uh, uh, thank you out loud because he definitely knows what I'm talking about.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Sheriff Ryan, if y'all will join them up there, one right aside for the picture. And look up at those lovely cameras and I'm sure he's got it by now.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Hinek, uh, Mr. Hinek.
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you think we need to, I see we're behind on our 9/15 public hearing. Do we need to switch things around or leave it like it is? Are we okay?
It's okay, the way it is. Yeah.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Um, next on our agenda is motion to approve the North Carolina 811 Safe Digging Month proclamation. Um, I will be glad to read this if you would like, but if you're comfortable with the proclamation.
We're good. One question. Do we follow this in our-
We will from now on.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor, uh, to approve the North Carolina 811 Safe Digging Month proclamation. Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Uh, Commissioner Gerling.
I approve.
Okay. Motion carries.
And next is, um, uh, the motion to approve Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day proclamation and I will be glad to read that if you would like.
I'll be glad to read this.
Commissioner, if you'd love, love for you to.
If you don't mind, I'd like for Commissioner Page to read that.
Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day proclamation, whereas 2020 represents the 47th anniversary of the end of the American bombardment and the Vietnam conflict and whereas 2020 marks the 55th anniversary of the start of the ground campaign in Vietnam when President Lyndon Johnson authorized the landing of the 9th Marine Expeditionary Brigade to defend the Denain Air Base in South Vietnam and whereas thousands of brave Americans served our country in this conflict with courage, honor, and valor. And whereas more than 58,000 individuals made the ultimate sacrifice in Vietnam and more than 300,000 more were wounded in combat. And whereas 1,626 Americans are still missing and unaccounted for from the Vietnam conflict and their families and friends and fellow veterans will endure uncertainty concerning their fate and whereas in 1982, the Vietnam War Memorial was dedicated to commemorate those members of the United States Armed Forces who died or were missing in action in Vietnam and whereas the Vietnam War was an issue among the people of the United States so that the crossfire public debate about the involvement of the United States in Vietnam War deprived many members of the United States Armed Forces who served bravely and faithfully for the United States during the Vietnam War of the support and appreciation for their service to our country and whereas the United States Senate officially designated March 30th as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day and encourages the people of the United States to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies and activities that promote awareness of the contributions of veterans who served in United States Armed Forces in Vietnam and the importance of helping such veterans readjust to civilian life. Now therefore be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims March 30, 2020 as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day in Wayne County and urges all citizens to join the special observance and take the opportunity to honor and thank our Vietnam veterans for all they have given in their service to our country, adopted the 17th day of March and adds as a form of the motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to adopt the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day proclamation. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the proclamation, raise your right hand, please. Commissioner Gerling.
I approve.
Okay. Uh, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, next is motion to approve Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation and I believe Carol would like to read that.
Um, I've been asked to read it on behalf of Cricket Davis with the family Y and G. I've actually done, um, work with her over the past years with this. She does a phenomenal job. She wanted me to remind everyone that despite, uh, the coronavirus, there'll be a lot of, um, things going on to promote it on social media, please check that out, as well as putting out your signs and pinwheels, uh, to, to show the support. So I'll read the proclamation, whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life as well as being our most vulnerable assets and whereas all children deserve to have safe, stable nurturing and healthy homes and communities that foster their well-being and whereas child abuse and neglect is a public responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of Wayne County and the state and whereas parents need support and resources to cope with stress and nurture their children to grow to their full potential and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2020 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Wayne County and calls upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. This is 17th day of March 2020.
Okay. What's your- Preface of the Lord.
Pleasure to attend.
Okay, we have a, a motion on the floor to approve the Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2020. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Uh, Commissioner Gerling, your vote?
I approve.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carries.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, number seven is motion to approve the 2020 Donate Life Month proclamation and I will be glad-
I'm, I'm gonna do it.
Do you want to read it?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Uh, before I read this, so, uh, I'm gonna probably stumble through some of the pronunciation of some of these words in here because I am not a doctor, but, uh, 2020 Donation Life Month proclamation, whereas according to the United Network of Org- Organ Sharing Donors, D U N O S, more than 112,563 people are waiting for organ transplants nationally. Three hundred and two, 3,239 of these people are in North Carolina and whereas an average of 20 people awaiting transplants die each day because there is a severe shortage of organ donors and whereas every 10 minutes, another name is added to the national transplant waiting list and the list is growing faster than the rate of organ donations. And whereas providing facts and dispelling myths are key to making a unformed, a, a informed decision about becoming a donor and increasing the number of people who sign up as donors and whereas the North Carolina Division of Motor Vehicles, the N C D M V, plays a critical role with 1.4 million North Carolinas, Carolanians in the state donor, donor registration having registered when they received their North Carolina driver's license, making it the eighth largest registry in the country. And whereas one organ donor can save the lives of up to eight people, improve more than 50 lives through tissue, blood, bone, bone marrow, corner donation and whereas North Cor- North Carolinians are encouraged to get the facts about donation and discuss their decisions with their families and their physicians. Sign up as a donor via the N C D M V by putting a heart on driver's li- driver's license or enrolling online at donatelifenc.org. And whereas Vina Medical Center, Transplant Center, is a leader in providing life-serving, saving transplants with patient's care for many teams, experts including surgeons, nurses, coordinators, social workers, infectious disease specialists, nutritionists, and- Inologist. And- Pathologist. Pathologist. And whereas Carolina Donor Service is federally designated open organ procurement organization serving 7.2 million people in 70, 70 counties of North Carolina and Danville, Virginia and serving over 1,000, 100 hospitals and four transplant centers that perform heart, lung- that perform heart, lung, liver, kidney, pancreas, intestine transplant, maximum, maximizing passing of heroic life from one human being to another through organ and tissue donation. And whereas the county of Wayne joins healthcare professionals, volunteers, educators, government agencies, face base, and community groups, and provide organizations in an effort to boost the number of organ, tissue, blood, bone, bone marrow, corner, and stem cell donors throughout North Carolina. Now whereas be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April, the month of April 2020 is Donate Life Month in Wayne County, and commend this observance to our citizens, adopted this day, the 17th day of March 2020. Okay. And I know I messed up a few words. No, that was a long one, Commissioner. Thank you. Um, what's the preference of the board?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept it.
Mr. Chairman, a motion on the floor to accept the 2020 Donate Life Month proclamation. All in favor, raise your right hand please. Uh, Commissioner Gerling.
Uh, go ahead.
Commissioner Gerling, please.
Okay.
I would like to make just a few comments now that I've read that. Uh, as many of y'all know, uh, August was a year ago, this coming August will be two years, uh, our family lost, uh, my granddaughter. She was on the organ transplant list. Unfortunately, she was one of those that did not live long enough to get her lung transplants. Uh, so this is very dear to our family. My daughter pushes it very hard. Uh, so please, you know, some people can't be organ donors because of their health reasons of their own. In Emily's case, uh, she was one of them. There was very few of her organs that could be donated because of the disease that she had, but uh, there's two people somewhere today that can see because of her eyes. That was one thing that that she could, uh, her eyes, her corners could be used on others, so we don't know who those two people are, but uh, but thanks to my Emily, there's two people can see today that probably could not before this. So I encourage everyone that can, please sign up to be an organ donor, because uh, you, you, if you hadn't been touched by it, it's uh, it's very hard to see one of your family members you know can, their life can be prolonged if they could just get a transplant, and in our case, like I said, it didn't happen, but uh, please sign up to be organ donors. Thank y'all.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Aco, we have a form us this morning.
Oh, yes, we do. If I can find them. I got them somewhere. Well, what in the world have I done with them? I've got them right here somewhere. I got them.
I got them, Carol.
He's got them, Carol.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we would like to appoint Dr. Osborne Wilder to the Animal Control Advisory Board, and that is a new appointment, Mr. Chairman, in form of a motion. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, raise your right hand please. Uh, Commissioner Gerling.
Commissioner Gerling, please.
Okay. Okay, second, we have a, this is a new appointment of Mr. Wilder Bunch to the Fremont Planning Board, and that's in form of a motion. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand please. Uh, Commissioner Gerling.
Yes.
Okay. And uh, third and last, we have a reappointment of Charles Brogdon to the W C T D A, Wayne County Travel and Tourism Board, and that is a reappointment, and that's in form of a motion. Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Aco. Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand please. Uh, Commissioner Gerling.
Commissioner Gerling, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Is that all, Mr. Aco?
Yes, sir, that's all.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, at this time, uh, we're gonna open the floor for our public comments time. I'd like to remind uh, everyone to, that you have four minutes. You must give your name, address, and phone number, uh, so anyone that would like to speak at the public comment at this time, uh, if you would step up, please.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Greg Ricker. I'm the Executive Vice President of Operations for Atlantic Casualty Insurance Company. So as many of you know, our company is growing, and uh, in the past several years, we've expanded six of our seven locations, and with a 51-year history here in Wayne County, we'd like to now expand in Wayne County. And so the company is committed to an investment of over $10 million and the creation of over 80 jobs, and uh, what you have in front of you today is a consideration for some incentives to help us expand, and um, we love Wayne County, uh, the company has a deep roots here in Wayne County, and we would appreciate your support of keeping us here in Wayne County and helping us grow and hire people and continue to make this place a better place to live, and uh, on behalf of uh, over 165 associates, we would appreciate your support.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other comments, uh, public comments? Okay. No, what, what happens is, is that we're gonna be getting the public hearing shortly. Greg, this, this is the public comment section, so.
We appreciate it.
But we do.
But you're gonna have to repeat.
Yeah, you're gonna have to repeat. Is there any other uh, comments from the public? I think there's.
We got Dennis Lewis for Public Forum, he said.
This is it.
This is it.
Come on in.
Chairman, may I request you play a video?
We actually are not allowed to uh, to put somebody's device unless.
We've had an opportunity to, before we put it into our system.
I can't hear.
Yeah, we, we can't, we cannot do that unless we screen it first before we play it, so uh, this time we will not be able to do that.
I will leave it with your attorney to screen, notify me when I can come back.
We have any other, uh, anyone that would like to speak in the, during the public comments? Anyone want to speak?
I'll try to make sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, our public comment is now closed. At this time, uh, we have, I'm opening the floor up for the public hearing to receive public comments regarding the potential economic incentives for Project Insure, Atlantic Casualty Insurance Company. The Board of Commissioners may, of course, vote on the potential economic incentives for Project Insure following the public hearing. Speakers will be limited to four minutes, and so uh, we're not, you say we're not gonna make Greg redo his commission? But I know Mark is here.
Yep. If we could get Mark to kinda come up and be great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, good morning. Four minutes, might be tough for economic developers, I don't know if we can keep it to that.
You have, you have my four minutes.
Yeah, yeah. Alright. Play with you today.
Thank you for this, and uh, thanks for Greg for, for being here. It's been a, it's been a process, uh, so we've gone through uh, expansions, and this is a perfect indication how long it takes to put a, put a um, economic development project together. Atlantic Casualty has been here a long time in Wayne County, and um, with auto owners headquartered in Michigan being a, a strong supporter behind Atlantic Casualty, so um, you know, Greg and, and our organization started talking probably over a year ago about the possibility of expansion, you know, not only North Carolina was in the running, but Arizona, Ohio, and Virginia was in the running, but uh, if you remember, uh, a couple years ago, we had an issue at Eastern Aluminum, um, with the fire out there that kinda trapped some folks that couldn't get in and out due to first responders and uh, those folks trying to take care of that, so, you know, one of the first things that um, Atlantic Casualty and Greg came to us, uh, is that we had to figure out how to get an extra entrance in and out of the park. If we couldn't do that, then they would not be locating in Wayne County, so that was one of the hurdles that we had to face, so, you know, as, as you all have heard that um, relationship building and relationship maintaining is, is a key in economic development. So we had to go to work, and it took a, a good long while, and Greg reminded me how long it took to do, how to put these things together, but this was such an important project, when you're talking about 83 jobs paying over $54,000 a year, 11.8 million dollars added to um, the revenues and, and the tax books meant a lot for Wayne County, so, you know, we pushed the buttons for our relationships and uh, with Commerce and Golden Leaf, uh, and all those folks, and DOT, and Duke Energy. So what we stand here for you, before you today is to talk about incentive agreement, not only with the city and the county, putting dollars into making sure we landed this project, but we also had a, a pretty, I think, healthy incentive package from the state of North Carolina, um, which was about 1.7 million dollars, and I wanna make sure I thank those folks because without them, we wouldn't have an expansion, and we wouldn't have the things that we're having today, but uh, we got out of the, one North Carolina fund, which is the governor's fund, was $250,000. We got rural division build and reuse money of uh, $400,000. We had IDF money for 500,000, 300 from Golden Leaf, we got DOT money of $207,000. Uh, we've got close to $100,000 from the North Carolina Community College System Custom Training Program, plus Duke Energy with another $50,000. So, you know, the last three, which was over a million dollars, which is the cost of building that additional road, um, to come out to the service road by Deacon Jones, uh, cover that cost, so without those relationships, without a project like this, we wouldn't have the monies to do that, to not only land Atlantic Casualty, but also be able to recruit further industry by our shell building in the Park East Industrial Park, so, so along with that, I gotta take my hat off to all our partners that help us do these things. Uh, we wanna thank Greg and Atlantic Casualty for bringing that project to us, and for being able to create jobs and create investment for Wayne County. Um, and that's not only Wayne County, that's a regional project, that's the Eastern North Carolina project, which if we stop and look at economic development projects, where we are, uh, they're all regional projects, because our road systems that we have in place, our interstates, our ports, we're all so close together that we can move product and people safely, so we're, we say thank you for what you're doing, Greg. Um, so before you is an agreement, um, that uh, we have brought to you, that is an agreement that's between the county and the city and Atlantic Casualty and Auto Owners Insurance Group headquartered in Lansing, Michigan, uh, with an investment of 11.83 million dollars, 83 new jobs that will begin in uh, December of this year and go for five years. We're uh, putting forth a 10-year incentive agreement that is uh, $450,000 from the county of Wayne and $440,000 from the city of Goldsboro to be paid out over those 10 years. Uh, the city of Goldsboro approved the agreement in their last meeting, so I'll open it up to any questions if you have not, if not, I'll ask for approval if we can get one.
Okay, I'd like to make a comment, Mr. Chairman. Not only are we pleased to have Atlantic Casualty uh, expanding here, another, one of the key things to, to meet, and I've had numerous calls on before, is that second entrance in and out of that park. That's, that's not only gonna benefit them, it's, that's gonna benefit us finishing that project out there, because there was great concern when Eastern Aluminum, when they had the fire, because not only uh, Atlantic Casualty had issues, other businesses in there had the same issues, but that, but that second uh, way in and out, uh, street is, that, that's, that's, it may not be as big as Atlantic Casualty's contribution, but it's gonna be a great contribution to that park.
It is, it'll help us tremendously.
Mr. Aco, if I can add, yesterday morning at 7:50 a.m., there was a natural gas leak at the corner of Gateway Drive and Oak Forest Road, which closed the park yesterday for about 50 minutes, so there was no way in and no way out. So this is now two incidences in less than 24 months where if you're in the park, you're in, and if you're out, you're not coming in, and the, the ability to evacuate our associates out is driving through a cornfield.
Pour the asphalt.
We'll move it out.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Page. I'll take this moment to say this, uh, we're gonna interact a little bit more with our new economic developer. Uh, one thing that I have found is that uh, you are very bashful about taking credit, so I'll do it for you. Nobody else could have done what Mark has done here. Yeah, that's right. I'm telling you, this was a, a real great accomplishment, because you had to reach out, because of your relationships that you had built through the years, you were able to reach out to who? N C D O T, Golden Leaf, and
Duke Energy.
Duke Energy, Department of Commerce, I mean, it wasn't just a matter of just saying, here's the grant from the county and from the city, it was so much more that you had to bring together in order to bring, bring this to fruition. Uh, great job, so I'll give you two pats on the back because it is a big accomplishment. I heard early on about the, what I felt like was a stumbling block that I didn't see how you were gonna overcome, and that is the second entrance. I knew that N C D O T, you were gonna really have another old battle there, but you found a way to go around that and get those dollars, and I just commend you for it. The other thing I wanna point out, and that is, these jobs are not $25,000 a year jobs, these are jobs that are paying
$54,000.
$54,000 on average, $54,000 a year, 83, 54,000, I mean, that's a big, big boost for Wayne County. Um, and one last comment, and that is, before everybody picks up the phone and calls me this afternoon, let me explain that this $450,000 from the county is not coming from tax dollars that are there, it is actually going to be, how do you phrase that?
It is a performance-based agreement, based on the jobs that Greg's gonna create, the investment he's gonna create on the new investment. So these incentives are generated from the, the local level, from the revenues on the new expansion, not what they already have in place, but this is the new expansion revenues that we're giving a portion of this back, because again, in the state of North Carolina, uh, Bateman is illegal, so you can't do that, so this is a performance-based agreement based on uh, the jobs and
The bottom line is, it's based upon the new investment, tax dollars coming to the county from that new investment is where those incentives are paid out. Yeah, and, and if they don't meet the benchmarks, they don't get the money. Correct.
It's all, it's on a prorated basis.
Exactly.
So we, we still will look at the jobs created and the investment that is made.
Yes.
And it's prorated on that.
I find that to be the number one issue that most citizens don't know about or don't realize, is that it's just not free.
That's right.
You gotta, you gotta do something to get it.
You gotta do something to get it.
That's right.
And we don't have a problem with you hiring 60 people instead of 50.
We're hiring a boat plan already this year, so that's, that's goodness.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would just like to add on to uh, maybe what Mr. Doctor said, uh, Mark, you need to Mark, you need to, at every chance, toot your horn just a little bit. And I say that sort of previously, but the public as a whole does not understand what the job developer does. They would say, we want someone to bring in jobs. Well, unless they know what you're doing, they don't make the connection. And therefore, sometimes the news media will only show when some company, for whatever reason, has to leave. And they don't hear about what's being brought in and what's being worked on. Yes, I know a lot of it has to be kept quiet until the end result, but in recent weeks, we have become aware that a lot of folks just simply do not understand the effort that's being put forth and the results that comes out of what you've been doing over the last year, year and a half. So, yes, sir, you're gonna have to toot your horn a little bit and make sure that the news media does a better job.
I'm not a good horn tutor, but you know, a good economic developer, we don't look for credit. Our credit is creating the jobs. So, we allow folks like Secretary Copeland to come make those announcements with the governor. That's their job. Our job is to create jobs and that's what we want to do.
I had the pleasure of serving on the board over there for several years. And before we give him all the credit, you got a well-oiled machine over there, you got some great staff that make you look good, so make sure they get part of the credit. They do a good job.
Definitely.
And you have gone working well together.
Yes, you do. It was a privilege for, to me and the county to be involved in this announcement. So, I think what Commissioner Doherty may have done is he set the tone that we need to have an announcement once a month.
I gave you two pats on the back.
I love that one. That'd be good. I said Joe Doherty, right.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, Mark, thank you. On behalf of Atlantic Casualty, we appreciate, you know, what you did for us and working with the staff, and we look forward to, you know, expanding here in Wayne County. It's real exciting.
No.
Thanks, Greg.
Let's keep in mind, we are, this is a public hearing, okay? So, at this time, and if there's no other questions, anyone that wants to speak.
There was nobody in the overflow.
Okay. All right, okay. So, at this time, I declare our public hearing finished, and at this time, if the board has any recommendations.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the economic development agreement as outlined.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the economic development agreement as presented. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Commissioner Girly.
Commissioner Girly approves it.
Okay, did you have any comments, Commissioner Girly? I've got to ask you.
Oh, no, no. Everything's great.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Okay. All right, thank you. And I am on Auto Owners mailing list. I am, and they are my insurance company, by the way.
Excellent, thank you.
From on my beach house, they really treated me well.
Your what?
On my beach. Ain't your house gab, ain't yours? I sleep there once in a while.
Oh, my God. Your what?
That's not his permanent address.
Yeah. No, brother.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I do want to second Commissioner Dr. Staiton about Mark and the work that he did coordinating that. And again, that was a long-term process, just a phenomenal job on his end. So, just again, one second. Next, we do have under unfinished business, motion to approve Atlantic Emergency Solutions as the lowest responsive, responsible bidder for the EMS remount. As boards are aware, this is a rebid of an earlier remount. It did come back to the same company once the paperwork and all certifications came in, so we feel very comfortable with this company moving forward. And Dave's here, if you have any questions.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve. Is there any comments?
Just one question. So, we got no other issues?
No, no issues.
We won't say this again.
You will not, not, no, no, sir. You will not say this again.
What's our turnaround time, Dave?
After they get receipt of the unit, it will be a 90-day turnaround.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the Atlantic Emergency Solutions as the lowest responsive bidder for the EMS remount. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Commissioner Girly.
Please, not, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries.
Next, we do have the consent agenda that we did go over in our pre-agenda meeting. If there's any additional questions with respect to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as written. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Mr. Girly.
Are you there, Joe? It's Connecticut.
Oh, it might be subordinate to Connecticut.
Commissioner Girly, can you hear us?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Okay, all right.
I have the background noise, could you repeat?
Yeah, we just had a vote on the consent agenda for approval. What's your vote on that, on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, if we could say it.
Okay, the consent agenda is approved and the motion carries. Okay?
All right. Thank you. And under new business, number one, we have a motion to approve Dell Incorporated as vendor of choice for the county of Wayne 911 Center, UPS, and Network Racks. And this is part of the budget amendment that was approved that we talked about in the earlier session. And Ryan is here, if you have any questions.
Okay, let's see.
Preface of the board. I did have a question on this.
Yes.
Are we getting reimbursements? Are we getting reimbursements from 911 on this?
This probably not.
This probably not?
Yes.
But this is the racks?
Right.
For the technology to service the 911 equipment?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
An ideological person would say that that is needed to operate the 911 center, but the 911 commission is not allowing funding through their source.
That is my understanding.
Good luck, Ryan.
I mean, this is the very reason why we need to reach out to our legislators to navigate this.
The last, sorry, the last we spoke, it was 20% on a portion of that.
They're going to give us 20%.
Right, that was the last I heard.
Has that changed, Mr. Chris?
Not at this time.
Yeah, we're still waiting.
Not at this time.
But again, part of that, we're still waiting on the budget amendment that we're trying to do to move some money towards the building.
But something is definitely wrong. If you've got to have equipment, now I understand we're going to have non-911.
Right.
In the building. But to turn around and say, we're only going to give you 20% when 80% is really the 911 core center, 20% is auxiliary departments or, and so it's just amazing to me that they are eliminating it down to zero or 20%.
I think it's important for us to understand that they have a responsibility like you gentlemen too, to make sure that we're using these funds specifically for what they've designated them for, being the receipt and processing of 911 calls. So, to go through that process, they will scrutinize what we're wanting to use these monies for, just to ensure that, you know, they are in fact eligible expenses based on what the board has said.
Well, I understand. I don't mind the scrutiny.
Right.
But to eliminate it and turn around and saying that we're not going to give you anything or give you 20%, I mean, I don't know anything at all about all this stuff. I really don't. But the bottom line is, I do know that it's needed to operate a 911 center. It doesn't have to be a rocket site, just figure that out. So, why would you not approve the funding from 911? I don't understand.
Well, I mean, there is some complexity to the 911 system, right? So, again, they're going to look at the receipt and processing of those calls. Some of the, you know, dispatch procedures, radio equipment may or may not be covered. They are very, very peculiar about what they will and will not fund. They do have good processes in place right now, though, that they will go through there and look at these quotes and can let us know early on, but they will scrutinize.
From my point of view of approving it, if it's not needed to operate a 911 center, and that's what basically they're saying if they're not approving the grant, they're basically saying this is not needed in order to, how did you put it, actually receive the calls?
And process.
And process.
Correct.
So, if it's not needed for that purpose, why are we approving it?
Is part of that data center that we talked about earlier in the pre-agenda with the fiber linked back to the 911 center? It's all tied, it is all, and again, I am a very much a novice on this, but it is all linked together with respect to the 911 center and the data. Is that a fair statement?
Let me go back to my point. My point is if 911 commission is not authorizing the payment for that because they're saying it is not needed in the core function, then why are we approving it?
I think we're always going to have some of those additional expenses, you know, just like you were saying, there are other pieces of the other offices that they would not cover, right? For the fire marshal, they wouldn't cover expenses for him. Likewise, technology for him and his office, they wouldn't cover that. So, we do have some additional expenses outside of the 911 center specifically.
Well, let me try to say that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, Mr. Parker, right now.
Go ahead.
Mr. Parker, Mr. Neal, keep me out of trouble here.
I didn't ask that before.
The 911 funds is based on just charges on every phone in Wayne County, including cellphones now. So, that's where the funds come from. Now, here's where you may have to keep me straight. The county used to control that funds, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and it was taken away from us and put in a pool, if that's the proper word, with the state and put it, someone else managing our money.
That's correct.
Okay, so, that's, I don't know who took the authority away, but like I say, the county used to, the funds used to come directly to the county and the county could use it as long as it was being used for the 911.
That is correct.
But now that's not the case. State took the money from your coffers and tells you now whether you can use your money. That's a zaka, right? The jury is out. Okay. Mr. Kamari? Arguments.
Go ahead. If Mr. Acoff has finished, thank you, Mr. Acoff. You asked the front end of the question that I had, and thank you, Mr. Attorney, for giving us a good answer as to what has happened. And my question is, when that group denies us how to use the money that's ours, where does that money go to? That's a rhetorical kind of a question because obviously it goes to some other county somewhere else, and based upon everything that we've seen in recent years, it's going somewhere west of us.
Well, I think until legislation changes, I mean, these are the bounds and the processes that the 911 board has for us, and we're trying our very level best to operate within those bounds to get as much money as we are entitled to.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Mr. Acoff. Another question, and y'all, one of y'all can probably answer it. What was the figure that they awarded us for our 911 center?
The grant was 1.5 that we received.
And another county east of 95 got 5 million.
About six.
Six million. I'm sorry, my mistake, 6 million.
Which county was that?
Martin. Martin. And that's my question, that's my question all along, excuse my mistake, but we're not sure we're getting our fair share, and we're not sure that the 911 board is consistently, is consistently implementing the policies that are in place. That's where I am, that's where I'm at.
And if you also remember, we, part of the grant that we received, $325,000 of that was for grant administration. We could not spend it on anything else other than grant administration, and that's why we had to hire Mission Critical as part of this process.
Yeah.
Let me get a clarification on that. 1.5 billion dollar grant, roughly $400,000, has to go to the administrator that we have to hire in order to get the 1.5 billion dollars.
Yes, sir.
That's something.
Now, my question is, what is the connection between the people that are administering the grant and 911 board? I mean, this sounds like a pat on the back inside jaw. Okay, we're going to give you 1.5, but you got to hire our friend over here to administer getting the 1.5. I mean, Mr. Attorney, I should have asked, keep me straight here, make sure I don't say anything that will happen. But I'm just saying, we're going to give up, we're going to give up 400,000 of the 1.5 million that we must hire a grant administrator that's recommended. I'm just, my gosh, this thing is just getting worse and worse. Now, the 1.5 million, my understanding was the 1.5 million was basically for the building.
So, within that 1.5, there was a grant budget that was, that was broken down exactly what we would be using that 1.5 for, whether that be network infrastructure, there was 300 and some thousand dollars for construction itself. And what Allison brought up earlier, what we've gone back to the board now and asked to do is move a majority of that money just towards construction, which hopefully will alleviate us having to answer some of these tough questions. It should give us a little bit more flexibility in what we can purchase without having to answer right to the 911 board and get that scrutinization that I was talking about earlier.
All right, I'm sorry, I forgot a bunch of questions, but what happened to this group that we're paying $400,000 to that's supposed to be helping us administer and propose this to the 911 commission so we get our funds?
Sure, so it was, are they working?
They are, they are working on the budget amendment, and they're working and carrying that back to the 911 board.
Well, Allison can do a budget amendment, I mean, we're going to pay $400,000 to do it.
But we are also, we have told Mission Critical that we're expecting that they will go back and ask for additional funding for this project.
Tell Mission Critical, this commissioner is not happy at all at their performance. This commissioner.
Yes, sir. Mission Critical need to pay us a visit.
Well, maybe that's the case.
Yeah.
Maybe that's the case, Mr. Manager.
Right.
Okay, all right, let's see if we can, we need to move on here. Thank you.
Can I say one thing because I can't.
Yes, yes, Mr. Dave. You've been quiet, okay.
The bottom line is, we've got to get to our legislative delegation. This has got to change.
Yeah.
What they're doing is they're distributing, redistributing the wealth. I think they call it socialism. And giving it from a county like Wayne, and I know that Martin's probably not one of your wealthier counties, so they got a bigger piece of pie that we had to pay, we had to share ours to give to them.
Keep in, keep in mind, though.
You see what I'm saying?
Keep in mind, both counties are tier one counties.
Am I wrong about that? And in this way, this thing's kind of working there, trying to help out the lesser wealthy counties.
And if you also remember, we. And if you also remember, we joined with Duplin County to provide them space to make us more competitive for the grant.
We did.
And Martin County was similar. Martin County, you know, brought in other counties as well that utilized.
That area up there, so.
So, and I will say this, and then I'll, we will let the matter drop, but, you know, we are, you know, paying Mission Critical for that expertise with the board and the processes with the board. And I promise you that I'm doing my due diligence to learn the processes so that, you know, I make sure that we are getting what we are due, what is fair. Promise you that.
I don't criticize you guys.
No, we're not criticizing you at all.
It's something way beyond where you guys stand.
Yeah.
This got this process set up like it is.
I just want to make sure when I have conversations with our legislative delegation, I'm correct when I say this. The 911 Board stated that we needed to hire Mission Critical in order to apply for this grant.
It was part of the grant award.
It was part of the grant award that stated we would, not that we had an option, we had to.
The money that was set aside, it didn't say specifically for Mission Critical, but it said for grant administration. It's the only thing we could spend it on. And there, I think there's a couple of other companies out there. Mission Critical is probably the best of those companies.
I want to ask one more question. I'll, could you give me a couple examples of what Mission Critical has done? Maybe give me one. What Mission Critical has done that you can point your fingers to that gives us some relief up here?
What did Mission Critical have done something?
Sure. So was that their suggestion that we go to the board and make this movement on the money, again, to try to streamline the process for us as a county? You know, and they do have that intimate knowledge or a broader knowledge than I do myself on the inner workings of the board and the proper processes.
So they gave you the suggestion to go to the board to ask them if you could do some certain thing?
Correct.
And you, and who developed the proposal that went to that board to get permission to do that some certain thing?
So, and that was Mission Critical's proposal?
They developed it for you?
Yes, sir.
And provided it to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? This, I know we're dragging this on, we're still beating this horse, but this is not the first encounter Wayne County has had with the 911 Board. This goes back, and I've been in the emergency service a long time. This goes back and, and I don't want to throw Mr. Gurley under the bus, but he's dealt with them in the past, too. Sometimes our needs, we know more about our needs than they know about our needs. But this has been an ongoing thing with Wayne County and 911 Board for years. I mean, this is, this is nothing new.
And I will say this, in fairness to Mission Critical, part of what they would say is they came in on the tail end of the project because we didn't know if we were gonna get the grant or not. So we worked with, you know, Jim Stumbo and the design and everything for the project, and then once Mission Critical came in, we paid them to apply for the grant. So then we got the grant, and they will argue, not argue, they would state that they came in on the tail end where they should have been paid upfront on the front end to help the process. So that's part of what they would say is, you're not having, you know, you're bringing us on the back end and you're expecting us to work miracles. So I just want to throw that out to you as well.
So, so may I ask, are they suggesting if they had been paid on the front end, they would have been able to get us more money?
I'm not, I don't think they said that, but they have said that it would have been.
Double their fee in existence.
It would have been a smoother process on the front end if we had brought them in at the time of design.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
On, on the, on the Godfather movies, sometimes they say, we want to find somebody to blame. Now, my question is, if somebody, please tell us, what year exactly did they transfer, Mr. Attorney, our authority to determine our money to Raleigh or wherever this? I want to know, what I'm trying to get at is, and I don't want to sound, I want to try to find out what group of legislators in Raleigh, what the timeframe was, because there had to be a vote somewhere that gave the authority to change the control of it from Wayne County to this 911 Board. I'd love to know, you know, who was the speaker, or who was it, you know, who was really in charge of legislating whenever that happened?
I'm not sure the exact date, but I can find that out.
It's been a long, it's been many, many years ago, Mr. Kamari. Our representatives in Raleigh were not there at the time.
Right.
Well, and that's, that's good, Mr. Ak. That's why I would love to be able to try to put a year on it so we could go back and ask our smartphone, who was the, who was in charge of the legislature at that time, or who was the governor at that time? Because we need to be able to blame somebody. I'm, I'm. That's all.
I have just one, I have just one pertinent question. I may have missed it. Do you, do you know, Mr. Manager, how much we, the County of Wayne puts into this pot on a yearly basis?
We can find that out.
I would like to know. Approximately.
We can find that out. I'm not sure.
Does anybody?
But we, there's restricted funds, there's, there's just a whole plethora of requirements, even under restricted funds, we get on an annual basis.
Right. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Akok. We've already approved this budget amendment. I call for a vote.
Okay. All right.
I'll have some discussion after the vote then.
Okay. We have a motion. Well, who made the motion? We haven't made, or are you making the motion?
Yeah, I call for a vote.
Okay. Okay. So we have a motion to approve Dale Incorporated as a vendor's choice for the County of Wayne 911 Center UPS and Network Racks. There's a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Gurley, did you have any comments you'd like to say about this? Have we lost them again? Okay, in the meantime, are there any other comments from Commissioner Seer?
I can make a quick comment.
Yeah.
Before we get final approval, can you have some final answers on some of these questions that are unanswered, like the years that legislation was approved? I know, I think Representative Black was the speaker that asked about during that time. I know Mr. Spager was active in that 911 Board. So we've been pretty active throughout the years. So there are some unknown answers that we do need to note in the forward due to file of the on.
Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. The motion has been rejoined. What is the preference of the board this time?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Bay.
Is there a timeframe these racks have to be there?
There's several answers to that. One, we've, we've put those bids out, they came back December 23rd. If Noel's there, I think it's December 23rd. So they've been sitting for three months, there's that. And if you look at the timetable of the building with the completion, there's two big unknowns there, where those racks are sourced, whether it be in technology, you can probably guess where some of that's coming from. And number two, the current situation with COVID-19. We are already 90 days out, so I'm just putting that out there. No pressure, just letting you know that's where we.
No pressure.
As you ask for, I'm giving you all the facts to make an informed decision.
What, now I'm confused. You know, the racks are already here?
No, sir. We haven't paid for them. This is the, this is the word the vendor, so we can go ahead, forward with that contract and then to order them.
And, but this, this was part of that budget amendment that we've passed a while ago?
You did, right, you did a budget amendment to go ahead and allocate that money, so then we could go ahead and award the vendor and then go ahead and order them.
Okay. Well, then my question to Mr. Gurley and also to Council, do, I mean, I don't know which direction to go. I mean, if we need the equipment, but then again, if we need to get those answers first, I want to, I want to follow Mr. Gurley's lead if we need to get some answers first.
It seemed to me that what Commissioner Gurley was asking for was to be able to get the information so when you met with the current legislators, you'd be able to tell them what was going on. But I don't want to speak for Mr. Gurley, but that's what it sounded to me like.
Let me ask him. Mr. Gurley, were you saying we needed this information in order to get with our legislators? Or are you saying that we need to not take action on this today and look at it another time? Be clear, can you clarify that, please?
Yeah, I think I asked them just to put it on hold for 30 days till we get some answers. And they have Raleigh staff that can get the answers for us. And we have staff and legislators here that can get answers for us. So I don't think it'd be to hold back on our budget process. And I don't think, you know, they could hold back on our tower sites or anything either. I do think some, some answers are needed to clear it up.
Commissioner Gurley, if I might, we, we actually have approved the budget amendment already to purchase these, pay for them. What we are talking about here is actually approving the contract to actually purchase. So we've already approved the budget amendment for it. It's just a matter of issuing the order to receive the goods. And I agree with you that there are a lot of unanswered questions. To give you an example, let's assume for a minute, and I recall some 15 years ago that we were collecting somewhere close to a million dollars a year. And maybe you can help me with this, Commissioner Gurley. We were collecting approximately a million dollars a year for 911 fees. Do you recall what we were collecting a year?
No, I saw my head, I do not.
Okay. Well, let me just cut it in half and say a half a million dollars a year. Over 15 years, we have paid in that those dollars went to Raleigh. Well, 15 years times a half a million is, is how much? 7.5 million.
Yeah.
Now, isn't that nice of them? They're gonna give us one and a half million of our seven and a half million dollars back. Somebody is getting, somebody's getting wealthy up there. So something ain't right.
We do get restricted funds back on an annual basis. We do, but it is not, you can't carry so much in a fund balance, though, or they will reduce your revenue.
All right. Then let me ask the next question then. How much money do we have in our restricted fund balance? You knew that question was coming, didn't you?
Yes, sir. There is some discrepancy on what we have in our fund balance because we're waiting on them to approve reports from two years ago.
What do you mean?
Whoa, whoa, two years ago?
Yes, sir.
What do you mean discrepancy?
Well, we have a fund balance that we report and they disagree with it. So they, Chris and Tina have been working with the 911 Board to try to submit all the documentation they can to, to have them, you know, make a decision that they agree with our fund balance and there's no adjustments needed. And that's holding up our report from June 30 of 2018. And so now we cannot get our report from June 30, 2018, or June 30, 2019, approved until this matter is resolved. And Chris and Tina have been working on it for months. I mean.
Okay. Now, I'm confused. You're telling me that on an annual basis, they allocate dollars from the 911 to Wayne County?
Yes, sir.
Did they send us a check?
It's a, it's a monthly distribution, yes, sir.
So we got the money?
Right.
And again, that goes back to the question is, are, if we get, if we're giving a million dollars a year, are we getting back the full million? Because again, they look at your fund balance as well. If you're not spending the money, they're not going to give you as much money.
But here, so there's a little, there's another piece of this. Yes, we do receive the money every month.
Okay.
We spend money out of those funds based upon our understanding, Chris's and his department's understanding of what the rules are for the 911 Board. After the fiscal year is over, they have to file a report with the 911 Board to show how they spent those revenues. And then the board reviews those reports, they have to submit quite a bit of documentation to that board, and then the board makes a decision about whether they agree with the expenditures that have been spent out of those funds. Now, in every year I've done it, there's been an expenditure that they've not agreed with, and we've had to pay back money. In other words, we've had to transfer money from the general fund because they disagreed with how we spent a portion of those funds. And that is what is in question now, is there is an expenditure from June 30, 2018 that they do not agree the way we've spent those funds, and Chris and Tina have been trying to provide all this documentation to show why they spent it. So that, that is where, that's, that's what's happening, and it's every year.
Talking about peeling an onion back. Wow. Okay. How much have they, what is the amount of the discrepancy?
It's about $160,000.
All right. Assuming that they're gonna get the 160 back, reduce their fund balance by the 160. Assume they're gonna get it back, how much money we got?
Oh, this is from memory, so I'm just gonna say 1.2 million. I mean, just, that's the same.
Are we using the 1.2 million dollars to buy equipment in the new 911 center?
Absolutely.
So everything you got left, you gonna spend for equipment?
As, as much as we can spend out of that restricted fund, absolutely.
If they approve it.
If, that's the caveat, yes.
That's the caveat on all of this.
I will say this, the board this year has put something that they call PSAP. It's a PSAP eligibility email, which basically goes to their finance director, and they look it over, any kind of quotes, and they should be making those decisions early on whether or not it is an eligible expense. So when we do these end of year revenue expenditure reports, hopefully there's no more confusion. They have already said early on, yes, it's approved, we will have documentation on that that I will absolutely keep and provide along.
Mr. County Manager, please add as one of our legislative goals to eliminate the dag of 911 Commission. But I really do, back, back to this point here, we really have already approved the budget amendment.
Right.
It's just a matter of giving them authorization to go ahead and.
Spend it.
And order.
Authorize the spend later.
So I don't know that we're gonna gain anything by delaying 20 or 30 days.
We won't. It sounds like if we delay and delay and delay, they're gonna look at the fact that we have a fund balance, and that's gonna play against us. So I think I assure Mr. Dodgers, whatever it takes to go ahead and spend the money, but that does not mean, Mr. Gurley, that we don't want those answers to those questions, which will probably take a bureaucratic long time to get. But I, I, I don't want us to do something that would delay and create that catch 22 sound like to me. If you don't do something, you're gonna be penalized. If you don't spend the money, you're gonna be penalized. And it sounds like they're gonna question however you spend it anyway. And it sounds like we're playing $135,000, $40,000 against the 1.2 million dollars we may be eligible for, if that's not too convoluted, but they need to move on.
Plus, we need to get this project finished. That's what you're saying. If we procrastinate too long, it's gonna hold up.
Because you gotta have it. And to add insult to injury, just for y'all's information, they take our 911 funds, and we did not have a say so who is on that 911 Board. I think I'm correct on that. We don't have a say so on who's on the board.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, for fear that Dale is going to back out of the agreements you settled to us in this price. And the fact that we have, in fact, already approved the budget amendment, I make a motion that we go ahead and approve Dale Incorporated as the vendor of choice for the County of Wayne 911 Center.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve Dale as the county's choice for the 911 Center UPS and Network Racks. Is, I hate to ask this question, is there any more discussion?
One thing, let's try to get.
One thing, let's try to get the answers to the questions that Mr. Gurley's recommended. We want to make sure we get them answered.
Right.
Mr. Gurley, we will address, get answers to all your questions that you have, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand, please.
I hate to raise that hand.
Mr. Gurley?
Please, my favor.
Okay, all right. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, guys. Next, under New Businesses, a motion to approve the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners risk management pool for insurance coverage for the County of Wayne. And as the board's aware, we have bid that out. You do have that information in your package.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we've tabled this or pulled it for right now until we discuss this in closed session.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to table this until we have our closed session. Is there any discussion? Any comments or discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Commissioner Gurley?
I'm ready.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, under County Manager's comments...
Whoops, Catch a Glimpse.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
This is Catch a Glimpse for March 2020, produced by Wayne County Public Affairs. In February, we learned how to make simply southwest tilapia on our regular Cooking with Michelle segment. We covered the Board of Commissioners as they toured the latest facility projects taking place across Wayne County. And we met Senior Airman Jacob Toothaker, where he told us what he does in ground transportation at Seymour Johnson. Sherri Archibald came by to update us on everything going on with United Way. And County Manager Craig Honeycutt joined Chairman Mayo in our Chairman's Corner segment on Wayne TV. We covered the roundtable discussion on agriculture at the University of Mount Olive. And we joined Jessica Strickland for In the Garden. Our friends from Cinder Stage Theater stopped by to talk about their upcoming performance at the Paramount Theater. And we covered the Atlantic Casualty Economic Development announcement. And we'd like to talk about Taylor Grantham. He's a member of our EMS team, and this picture right here was sent to us from a citizen who said our EMS team was so gracious and compassionate in helping her family in a difficult time. Thank you, Taylor, and thank you to all of our employees for making Wayne County a better place to live and work. And now, a video from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Hello and welcome to this week's Video of the Week. Each year, North Carolina county officials make up one of the largest state contingents at NACO Legislative Conference in Washington, DC. And this year was no different. With nearly 100 county officials from across North Carolina, our state was well represented this past week in NACO steering committees, where NACO policy is guided and formed. NCACC President Kevin Austin authored an amendment to strengthen the county role in federal workforce programs that was presented to and passed by the NACO Community Economic and Workforce Development Policy Steering Committee by unanimous vote. North Carolina commissioners and county officials participated in many other steering committees. And both our second Vice President Tracy Johnson and Executive Director Kevin Leonard spoke on panels for NACO attendees. Person County Commissioner and NCACC Past President Ray Jeffers was elected to be the South Region Representative on the NACO Executive Committee. He was elected at the South Region Caucus on Monday morning, and we congratulate Commissioner Jeffers. North Carolina county officials took the opportunity while in DC to visit with their congressional delegation, and NCACC staff met with congressional staff as well. Attendees also heard remarks from retired General Colin Powell and the President of the United States, Donald Trump. It was a packed few days in DC for our county officials, but a productive one. We at the NCACC would also like to note that with all of the discussion around the COVID-19 virus, we have put together a resource page on our website, where we'll put any relevant information for counties we find related to the disease. You can access those resources at ncacc.org/covid19. Well, that's all we have for this week. Please email communications@ncacc.org with any questions about anything we've covered here. Thank you for watching, and we'll see you next week.
And now, to follow up on the COVID-19, I do want to, you know, we've done things a little bit different today. And we'll do things different for closed session. We did things a little bit differently in allowing the public in. We're trying to keep the social distances as required. But I do want to thank, and we have Dave Cutterback, our EMS Director here, Aaron Stryker is here, and just wanted them to give you a quick update about what we're doing, what has been done, and if there's any potential next steps. But again, I want to thank the work that Public Affairs has done, that CHIP's done, our chairman has been very involved. The school system has done an incredible job of working with us and keeping us involved and in the loop. This is the beginning, I think, of the thing, or of the entire process. It will probably last for a while, but I want, you know, you and the citizens to know what we are doing to prepare, to get ready, and the things that we are implementing. So.
Yes, good morning, gentlemen. So first of all, COVID-19 is definitely going to be different than disasters that we've had before. It's not like a hurricane that we can see coming. It's gonna sit on us for a couple of days and then move off. This is probably going to be a much longer event. The good news is, myself, Director Cutterback, and then interim Director Ken Stern at the Health Department, we've been talking about this even before it really broke national news.
Mr. Gurley?
Yeah, so we've been talking, and that communication has spread to the Sheriff's Department, to also include the base, Wayne Memorial, the schools, the colleges, and the municipalities. So as information is changing on this, on a daily, if not hourly basis, as far as guidance coming from the state and federal government. So we're still in the process of trying to find that balance. Passing the information along to the public to let them know what resources are available, but also, at the same time, not causing, not overreaction and causing a panic. So we're trying to find that, still working on that balance. I mean, we're talking constantly as new information is available. Anything to add?
Well, before you finish, you made a comment, if I understood you correctly, that you did not want to do certain things to cause an overreaction to the virus. What do you mean by that?
Well, initially, like declaring a state of emergency, even though the state of North Carolina declared a state of emergency, we were initially holding back on it because of what that state of emergency kind of has that connotation. Once the governor closed the public schools, we went ahead and advised to declare a state of emergency because that, by being in that state of emergency, opens up additional resources that would not be available to us unless we were in a state of emergency. And depending on what happens with the schools, that could have an impact on county municipalities and the private sector employees as far as children in daycare and children out of school. So we just took that step when we had to.
We hear nationally that there's just a extreme limited or a potential short of bed space if this virus went into an Italy-type situation. Have you had any discussion with anyone concerning the COVID engineers' ability to put up temporary hospitals?
Temporary sites?
Yeah.
Yes, I've actually reached out to the hospital, Cherry Hospital, and the base, and we're having discussions on worst-case scenario, we need to start housing people, where are we going to put them. We're still very early on in that, because those organizations obviously have to worry about their people and their patients and their personnel within those facilities. But those discussions are happening, and we are thinking, worst-case scenario, what can we do? Where can we do it?
Do you have a, do you have an estimated, and I know this is hypothetical, I'm sure, but do you have an estimated length of time it would take to say, put a facility up that could handle 100 more people than what, say, the hospital could handle now? If you were in that situation, and you said, all right, we need 100 more beds, are you in, are you far enough along that someone can tell you how long it would take to pull that off?
No, sir, we don't have an estimate for that now.
Did I close with this? Let's not wait until, and I get a feeling that the public folk in charge, I'm not talking about where you all at, but of your word, embarrassment may be a more critical situation. Sometimes people will not do things because they don't want to be embarrassed by not having to have it. For instance, sometimes the superintendent of schools has called, "Let's go home," because the snow was coming and the snow didn't come. And all of a sudden, somebody think they've got egg on their face. All I'm saying is, this is not a time for us to be sitting on our hands. So I want you all to be aggressive.
And we have been, sir. We actually have been ahead of the curve as far as communicating within the county, county agencies, communications with the state, and thinking worst-case scenarios, how we would handle that. It's still early on, because like I said, the situation is changing not just daily, but hourly. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Dave?
I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
And I've got to be careful that I don't let people recognize how skeptical I am of this entire event. But my question is, what is the treatment for this virus?
As far as, I'm not a medical expert, sir, but as far as I understand it, is, what? Fluids and sleep.
Hydration.
Hydration and...
Antibiotics.
Antibiotics? No, this isn't like the flu where you...
So there is no antibiotics on this? There's no medicine?
Not yet.
They're trying to come up with a vaccine right now.
No, no, the vaccine would prevent it. I'm talking about treatment.
Hydration and rest, sir.
So your body immune system is actually, what is going to fight this?
Yes, sir.
My, I don't know what the end game is on this. And what I mean by that is, have you gotten any estimates in regards to the length of this event?
Well, we are seeing, we have, excuse me, we have seen the spike in China that is starting to level off. I believe it's starting to level off in Europe now, too, from last I saw about it. I don't want to give, I'm not an expert in this, so we're kind of still reacting. I do believe personally that we probably are going to see a spike within the United States of more than what we have. So that's what we're preparing for. But as far as how long this event is going to last, we don't know. This is a slow, slow-burning event.
I'm not quite understanding why generally, we're not just telling it like it is, and that is, that we don't really have any medications necessarily in regards to this. And so therefore, rather than having a tremendous spike, which we don't have the capacity of to have medical facilities and so forth with that large of a spike, all we're doing is trying to level that spike down as much as we can. Am I correct on that?
Yes, sir.
But as you do that, as you do that, you lengthen this as well. So some people are now talking about July and August before things get back to normal. Am I correct in making that statement?
I've heard the summer months, but I've not heard anybody say it's going to be done by this.
Right, they don't know, but they are talking now in July and August. Can you imagine the economic impact that, on this country, if we continue this until July and August? And I'm just wondering whether anybody is really looking at that. Because you're talking about now, they are recommending that we not meet in groups of larger than 10.
That is a recommendation that has come down. So far, North Carolina is still operating off of the governor's executive order of groups of 100. So that's what, that's still the official order as far as making the groups smaller.
I understand. But if they're talking about on the national level 10, believe me, it'll filter back down. Do you realize how many businesses will cease to exist as a result of limiting that to 10?
Yes.
So this is serious. I mean, this is extremely serious. And our job in government should be trying to find a way to minimize the impact financially. Because as that, these businesses close, so does the revenue coming into our county, to our state and our nation. So I'm just wondering if, as we are trying to react to this, we're also looking at the negative effects of this to our economy and life as we know it. But at this point, you're just saying there's really no antibiotics or no medicine that's actually, you just are basically rest, hydrate, and let your body's immune system react to it?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. K.
We have highly qualified people on staff that are putting in a whole lot more than eight hours a day to bring us this information. And they're gonna let us have the information on a need-to-know basis. So we don't need to, a lot of the questions that we would like to ask, they don't have the answers for. So to keep from embarrassing them and us, too, they will let us know on a need-to-know basis. Am I not correct, Mr. County Manager?
We will. And that's why I think it's been so important. And again, I apologize, Ken Stern is not here, our Health Director. Through all the conversations and stuff, I forgot to invite him, so that is my fault. But we have really, between public information, working with our OES staff, we have, and school system, we've worked with the cities and municipalities, we really have tried to do as good a job as we can to take a lot of the advice of what we've been given at the state and federal level and implement that here locally to make sure we have what we can control. We have responsibility of trying to lessen the impact to our citizens, such as, again, the senior center. We have closed the senior center for activities, you know. What the suggestion we had from the state was, anything that encouraged people to conjugate, and there were older people, that's not a good thing to do. So we're still providing meals, but it's on a takeout basis. We're still doing the home health visits only on well patients. But we're trying to do these things with the VA. We're only allowing appointments. We don't want our veterans, who probably are poor health to begin with, to sit together and wait, who are probably in the poorest of health. So now, we're going to do that by appointment only. Same thing that we're going to do with the library. We're working on some things to allow curbside service at the library. So we're trying to do what we can to limit the people that are together. We're trying to spread out, you know, the risk to the general public, but also to our staff as well. Because we have, as Commissioner Acoff said, if somebody gets sick, they're gonna call Dave. And they're gonna call 911, who's gonna call Dave, and Dave's gonna have to be the one to go pick them up. And we have to make sure we have the personal protective equipment, that we have got our personnel trained to do what they're supposed to do, and that we've got clear information given to our citizens about what their response is. And one thing I've asked Dave to do is, y'all have probably gotten a lot of questions about, what am I supposed to do? Who am I supposed to call? What can I get tested? And all these things. Lot of misinformation out there. And I did ask Dave to really find out, and so we can clarify where we're at and what our citizens are supposed to do if they feel like that they have a, are been exposed to the virus. So Dave, if you will...
Wait just a moment. I mean, we just got this text.
Yeah, we did.
From the Office of the Governor, Roar Cooper. Effective at 5:00 PM today, restaurants and bars will close for dine-in customers. Takeout and delivery orders can continue. So in essence, we have just, throughout the state of North Carolina, closed down every restaurant, unless it's a takeout. I'm just saying... I'm just saying that I'm hoping somewhere people recognize the economic impact. How many people have just been put out of work? I mean, these are some major things that are happening.
Yep.
And although reaction is important, I just want to make sure we're not overreacting. I'm just.
Yep.
I'll hush. Said too much.
No, you haven't. I agree with you because it's already out there. Small businesses are going to take the brunt of this depending on what policies are put in place. And we create 85% of the jobs in North Carolina. So there's got to be, there's got to be something that will help small businesses get over this hunt. And I'm hoping there's going to be some legislation, especially from the federal government. So, but before, Dave, before you say anything, I'd like to, to follow up here a little bit. One of the, one of the things that we've been talking about, uh, the county manager and I, all of us in our meetings, is that we're trying to figure out different ways or better ways to get communications out to the citizens. That seems to be one of the areas, whether it's, it's our fault or it's the citizens' fault. We, we are doing everything we can at this time to get information on the street to the people that need it. But there's still a lot of questions about where do I go? You know, and this is why you're here. You guys are here. But the key is, is that unless somebody looks at our website, the Board of Health website, uh, you know, or, or our Facebook, they don't know. So we are going to be in discussions about some different things we can do to get this out publicly in a faster and more efficient manner. So that's my comment. Dave?
Yes, sir. One thing, Mr. Daughtry, we're trying to be, is not be reactive in this. We're trying to be proactive. Um, without you pay us to have that doomsday mindset. So we're, we're trying to stay ahead of the curve on this and have everything in place. Uh, from an information standpoint, you're exactly right. There's a lot of websites out there. There is some misinformation. Should we always caution people? Make sure you're going to a reputable source. Uh, two good sources that we have that are the easiest to obtain are 1-800 numbers. One of them is through UNC. Uh, the 1-8, it's actually an 8-8-8 number, that number. Uh, they will answer questions and then you can actually speak with the nurse if they consider you a high risk patient. The other one is from our North Carolina Poison Control. And that's just giving basic information about, uh, about COVID-19. So I'll be more than happy to give you those numbers if you would like. Uh, the UNC number is 1-888-850-2684.
2681.
8-8-4. Yes, sir.
2684.
Yes, sir. And North Carolina Poison Control, that's an 8-6-6 number, 4-6-2-3-8-2-1.
And that's, and that's good because, uh, when I call my local health provider, if I remember the recording just right, they say, we're not treating the virus. You need to call someone else. And then that puts, well, it gives me some moment of, 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 uh, I won't say anxiety, just concern that, uh, so you're at home and you could start to not feel good. And you really do need to be able to feel confident that you can call someone.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, of course, my natural instinct is to call someone at the county level because, uh, although you can make it formidable to see your local provider, that's suspect.
And you know you can call us anytime and we'll call you right back. Uh, Mr. Daughtry, so it's supportive care. Uh, let your immune system do its thing. Uh, trials are getting ready to start if they haven't started already for a vaccination. But that's, that's getting in front of this. Once you've, uh, once you've contracted the virus, supportive care is what you need to focus on and, and trying to decrease, uh, passing it on to somebody else.
I wasn't going to say some of these comments from the commissioner comments, but I'm going to go ahead and say them now.
Yeah.
I do sit on the hospital board and the other night, Janie, who's the CEO, gave us, gave us an update of what, you know, UNC is doing. And then as she finished, she asked Dr. DeGrant, which I'm sure y'all were talking to him, what comments he had. He said, first of all, eight members of this board touched their face while you were talking. And I sat in here this morning looking around and I quit counting after 10. And I went up here too, and I caught myself doing it. So we've got to do sensible, that's what he was trying to say. You've got to do sensible things so you don't transmit this stuff. If you go to the hospital right now, they're going to send you home. Because they don't want it in the hospital. They don't want it in the emergency room. There are discussions to set up a different area, either behind the hospital or within, somewhere in the hospital. Because the testing is going to start real soon. You, you know that. UNC has got to test. I sent that to you yesterday. So they don't have the answers, but so at this particular time, they're just going to send you home and tell you to rest up, take your ibuprofen or whatever you're going to take and stay hydrated. But, um, I'm real concerned about the economic impact. And we've changed the rules on unemployment in this, in this, um, state. So it takes, it's tougher than it used to be to be able to even get unemployment. In fact, I had a text earlier about like the school folks who are not being paid on state wages. How, how are they going to get paid? Are they going to still be paid? For local dollars while they're out? And, um. So there's a lot of things that are going on. I had a text from, from a dental stopper just a minute ago. Won't know how quickly their staff could get unemployment. And I told them I'd been out of the game for nine years, so I don't really know anymore. But, um.
I'm sorry. And that was a concern though, because that was voiced to me yesterday about school personnel who were not on the state salary schedule. And, and, uh, my comment to that person was, this is not a moment to be stringent.
But I got a feeling and apparently it's in that federal legislation that there'll be some sort of disaster unemployment that usually comes with disasters like you could call this one. That is not as stringent in terms of, um, availability. And perhaps getting the state to waive the waiting period so you don't lose a week to start off with. And that has been done before while I was still doing that kind of work. But basically what we're getting is just be smart, don't hoard. I mean, you could lower it in a few more weeks, you're going to have a control pack.
What are they going to do with all the control?
I don't know.
I don't understand.
I want to, I want to back at the second follow-up on, uh, Mr. Camardi's statement. Talking about getting the word out. One of the, one of the questions that, that I've been asked and have been aware of is that, and I didn't know this. That's why we need to possibly look at different ways of getting it to the citizen. But most citizens don't realize that if you think you need to be tested or you have some symptoms and you go to your family doctor and he says, well, you need to go to the emergency room. Well, the emergency room will not see you unless you are referred to by another doctor. Now, is that correct? Is that correct? Mr. Honeycutt, you and I talked about this.
If I may, Chairman, I have, Joel just sent me the protocol. If I may read it, that has been vetted by the hospital for us to release.
I think I sent that out a couple of days ago.
Pardon?
I think I sent that out a couple of days ago.
Yes, sir, but this is the, the message that we've been pushing that they have, they have confirmed. If you begin to have symptoms related to COVID-19, fever, cough, shortness of breath, or are concerned you may have been exposed to COVID-19, the Wayne County Health Department advises you to contact your primary care physician. If you do not have a primary care physician, please call the UNC Health Helpline at 1-888-850-2684, which is the number that Dave just gave you, before visiting an urgent care location, hospital, or emergency room. In all situations, if you feel you are experiencing a life-threatening emergency, call 911. That's the message that is being pushed out.
That is correct.
From the hospital, from the county, from everybody. So.
Right. But where, where does the average person go unless they go to one of those places to find it? Where do they go to get this information? So the, the bottom line is, it's already being discussed what we can do here in the county to help. And one suggestion from one of our legislators has said, well, you know, uh, we do it all the time in elections. What about a, what about a rubicole or something similar to that? Uh, and of course, that's going to be part of some discussions that we're going to have on how can we get this word out to the citizens? That's what counts. If we can get the word out to the citizens, because a lot of people keep in mind, we still have parts of this county that don't have Wi-Fi or anything else at this point. How are we going to get the word to them? So those are questions that the county manager and the school board and all of us are going to be asking some questions. We talked about that, about what we can do. So.
And, and I think, and again, and I apologize when you asked a question. I was reading a text.
No, that's fine.
From the school system.
Yeah.
They, there, there's no answers really, especially on that topic again, about certified and uncertified, uh, employees at this point, because as they said, that, you know, teachers and other people can take work home. Bus drivers and some cafeteria workers can't. So how do you make a differentiation? So, uh, there, there's a lot of unknowns that are out there. And, um, I, I think one of the biggest things we wanted to do with, uh, Dave, and, and I appreciate Carol reading that, is that one of the biggest questions we've had is what am I supposed to do?
Yes.
Who am I supposed to call? What is the process, you know, uh, you know, is it the tele, uh, you know, my primary care physician is, if I don't have one, is it the 1-800 number? Uh, you know, when am I supposed to call, uh, 911 and, and somebody to come and check on me? Or when can I get tested? And again, I don't think the testing issue, they've talked about mobile testing and, and drive-through testing.
That ain't going to help. That's not in place right now.
Right. So, um, but there's, there's so much really out there that is the unknown. But, but I, I do want, one of the real issues that I wanted our staff to come here, and again, I apologize for Ken not being here, is there's been a lot of work done in the last week and a half. And even before that, really trying to work and trying to make sure we, we are doing the right things and that we are following the guidelines, uh, that is listed. And that we are trying to message as much as possible, very clear and concise information back to the public and wanting to make sure that, that not only are we looking at our public that we want to keep safe, but also we're putting in things, uh, for staff as well to make sure that, that our staff is doing the things that they need to do. Because they're going to be the ones, uh, if we do get that spike, that have to be here and we still have to operate.
And just to add on to, to the communication piece. Ms. Carol, I want you to, as a part of this whole communication piece, I would like for the two of you and Ms. Carol to, on our TV station, have precise, uh, directions and, and information that you're sharing with us this morning. So that, and, and, and maybe designate and let the public know that on certain hours of the day, you can tune into our station and hear the latest information. Because clearly, when, and I'm not discouraging anyone, but when this doctor, Fossey, or however you pronounce his name, when he's talking, I think the world is paying attention. But when politicians are talking, we're not sure they know what they're talking about. And I think for the, for the, for the, for the, for the, for the good feeling of the public in general, they want to hear from folk like you two and maybe the, the, the hospital director or hospital doctors in charge, maybe Dr. Green.
Yeah.
That's who, that's who, that's who I want to hear from. I'm sorry.
I say, well, listen to you.
All right. That's what I thought.
Ken, Ken Stern at the Health Department just texted me a number that, that we are putting out as well for people to call the Health Department that will be answered if you have questions. Uh, that number is 919-731-1000.
Yep. I have that on my comments. But, but being involved in all this for the last, last week in particular, folks, uh, I can tell you that the, the Health Department, all of us together here, I can see this is not, this is not a Monday through Friday job anymore. It's a 24/7 job. And, and that's why we were, all of us at the county, we meet anytime, anyplace. Just like we met with, with, with the school, with the schools Sunday in order to get this state of emergency signed and to go ahead and get the meals that the schools are going to do so they can get their schedule and, and everything. And we were there to participate if needed. But the key is, is that a lot of these meetings are going on. We are doing what we're supposed to do. But doggone it, we're just coming up short to the person that's out there on the street that, and of course, you know, things are changing, like you said, every hour. So they, you can't get it ever so fast. So we, we need to figure out a way, and one thing has been mentioned about the fire department, you know, we have a, we have a code red, you know? Maybe that's something we need to look at. We got to figure out a way to get it to the grassroots level.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Acoth.
Reaching the public. Just keep on doing what you're doing and do what your plans are that you've got in place. Mr. Parker, go get him out of jail for this. March the 3rd was a perfect example of reaching the public, the people in Wayne County. Only 30% of the people on March the 3rd. And, and, and you, and you know, you, they, you can't reach the public if they don't want to be reached.
That's true.
That's enough.
All right.
But, but again, I, I, I do want to give you a level of comfort as well to know that our staff is doing everything that they can do. And, and our, our public affairs tip the whole nine yards. We are working together really to try to make sure we minimize and we follow the guidelines and we do what we're supposed to, uh, to, for the protection of our citizens and also our staff. So, um, uh, I, I want to say this for Aaron. Two weeks ago, Aaron got on, uh, uh, Web EOC and we were already asking for personal protective equipment. So we are, you know, again, we are way ahead of the game as far as some of the counties. We're not playing catch-up. We are on top of this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Gurley, do you have any comments?
No, I'm good. Thank you for your time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you all, and we want you all to be safe as well.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your commitment.
That's all I have.
Okay. We, we, we are going to take a five-minute break. We don't have a choice here. I'm getting these little notes being passed. Okay? Okay, we're, we're back, we're back in session. At this time, uh, let's, uh, let's finish our county commissioner comments. Commissioner Camardi, do you have, uh, any other comment?
Uh, not really, except to, uh, just to, to acknowledge that I was at our most recent DSS meeting as part of our extended assignments. I would like to, uh, thank the gentleman that just came up. The two gentlemen that's in charge of our 911 and emergency services. It is critical that, uh, that they keep us informed and as much as can be and will be put on our, uh, stations so that we can know what's happening in Wayne County. It's interesting and maybe over, uh, my sister say overkill, and I heard that said a little bit about what's put on nationally because they've got to maintain their ratings. And so therefore they play the same things over and over, which can be a little bit overkill. But, uh, I'm glad to hear that. But uh I'm glad to hear that. We've had extensive meetings with the school system. Uh it was brought to my attention yesterday by a uh board member that while they have the teacher salary covered, the other folk that will have some job responsibilities, they're not sure about that. Mr. Manager, I want you to continue to be in conversation with the school leadership to make sure that those folk don't fall through cracks. This this is just not a time for us to be reluctant to do whatever it takes to make sure that all of our uh employees, county and city, who must be on job to do their jobs are compensated. Mr. Daughtry makes a good point that all of our businesses are going to suffer and uh all the small restaurants and things that you see that's popped up in the city are going to suffer. But uh I cannot help but have a special uh place in my thought pattern about the many small businesses that are service-related. Plumbers, carpenters, uh sheet rock, roofers, all that group is dependent upon uh continual need for their services. And and that group, I I I don't know exactly how, they are self-employed. You know, somebody's got to dig deep in their thought pattern as to how those folk are gonna be need to be helped as this as this emergency stretches down across time. And and uh there's no easy answer for that. But I think the public is gonna be looking to this board to come up with some answers. Because after all now, we are the one that collect the taxes, property taxes and all that kind of thing. So folks are saying, you know, where's the money, where's the money? They're gonna be looking for us for some answers. So uh Mr. County Manager and Mr. Chairman of our board, there there're gonna be some times that you guys are gonna have to meet that you won't be able to call us all together, or need to. And so I'm as close as a cell phone. And I think that as we move down through time, uh we're gonna have to rely on some electronics communications rather than face-to-face. I just want us to be thinking about that and 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 take us in the direction that we need to go. That's all.
Okay.
Just one comment, um I was thinking about. If it does come to the point where these people need to file for unemployment, there are no field operations anymore that take unemployment claims. You have to do it online or by phone. So don't go to any agency works expecting them to take the claim because they don't have the capacity or ability to even do it. Sad, because there are a lot of people in this borough who still need that face-to-face help. I was always against that change, but that's the way it is now. That's all I got.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Akon?
Yes, sir, I I think I've said enough today just about. Uh but I do want to uh remind everyone that we did lose a firefighter, volunteer firefighter in line of duty last week. Uh our condolences to his family and to Third Fire Fire Department. Uh it seemed like Third Fire Third Fire has had their share of of misfortune because this is two that they've lost in the line of duty over the last 20-some years. Uh but again, I wanted to condone it to to Mr. Joe Tucker's family. But I also wanted to thank uh our fire marshal and his staff, all of OES, 911, uh EMS, everyone that uh stepped up to the plate. I had the honor of going to the funeral Saturday and all of our people were real represented. Also, I want to thank the other fire departments in Wayne County and some from outside of Wayne County that uh that was at the service. It's uh in times like that, you you really find out who your friends are. And uh and the fire service in Wayne County and and the state of North Carolina is is a close-knit family. And and again, I just wanted to thank everyone that participated in that and uh and uh just keep that family and that fire department in your prayers. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We had an election since we've had our last meeting and uh we've got three new board members that are gonna be coming to see uh visit with us for four years, starting in December. Uh and we've really got a lot on our plate. The quarter cent sales tax failed. But it was not as a result of any effort that was put on by the part of staff, public affairs, the chairman, our county manager, assistant county manager, the superintendent, school board members, and members on this board that actually went out to inform the public of how important it was to have that quarter cent sales tax. Folks, we've got some real needs in this county. And as we can see today, there are needs that just pop out of the out of the blue. Uh unexpected expenses that pop up in the realm of a half a million dollars here or half a million dollars there. And it's it's easy to kick the can down the road. But folks, it's time now that uh we in Wayne County have to recognize we're gonna have to address these school issues. There are critical needs. They're not a matter of something that we can put off for another 100 years. I mean, we're going to have to face them. How are we gonna face them? I really don't know. But we're going to have to really rack our brains and come up with some alternative methods of addressing them. I do want to thank those individuals that supported me in uh my reelection uh in the primary. Uh I still have November to go, so we've still got November to face. But again, I I'm just really concerned about how we addressed our our critical school needs while addressing the critical needs we have in our county. We still have issues with a a health department, with DSS, with uh our detention center. So we've got other capital needs as well. So um hopefully, we'll find the money tree out here and we'll have it all solved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Daughtry.
Excuse me. I uh just have a few comments. On on March the sixth and the seventh is when we had the visitation and funeral of Commissioner John Bell. And what I want to do is, I'm sure I'm gonna leave someone out, but I don't mean to. But Commissioner John Bell uh was at the Maxwell Center for the visitation. The county stepped up to the plate. Carol, I'm, let me tell you, you you and your staff did a phenomenal job, not only in person, the the reefs on the building out here, the the John Bell Building, but uh just being there, you know? And a lot of the staff uh went to uh John Bell's uh visitation. What I can say is, is that the Sheriff's Department, a lot of people stepped up to make this. It gave John Bell the 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 celebration of leaving this world that he deserved. And that's 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 all, that's the only way I can describe it. And so having said that, I did attend, I've attended a lot of meetings. My gosh, I can't believe it seems like we haven't met in four or five months. And but I did go to the Cherry Hospital Black History Month, participated in that. Library Board, we had meetings, DSS, uh Mr. Camardi and I. But the rest of my time today, I want to address the coronavirus and talk to the citizens of Wayne County, including us, but Wayne County in particular. I urge all of us to use common sense and restraint concerning the coronavirus pandemic. School closures and limits on group meetings help to slow the spread of the virus. We must be careful not to overload our healthcare system. Older adults and people of any age with underlying health issues such as diabetes, lung disease, or heart disease are at greater risk of severe severe illness from the coronavirus. There are many helpful sources available to the public to learn more about coronavirus and how to protect, prevent spreading the virus. One place is to visit the Wayne County Health Department website Or we can call and speak to a staff member at the Health Department, as already been mentioned, nine one nine seven three one one thousand. This number has also been mentioned earlier, but the North Carolina Division of Public Health has a call line at one eight six six four six two three eight two one that is there to answer questions from the public about the coronavirus. And there's a lot more that we could say, but I'm just sort of giving a little synopsis. Finally, there will be challenging days ahead associated with this virus. But our county and our state and our country will survive this as we have survived many disasters during our country's 243-year history. Our determination and faith in God will allow Wayne County, the state of North Carolina, and the United States of America to defeat this virus. And with God's help, we will be stronger than ever. I ask God's blessing on us all during this time. Thank you. Okay, unless there's any other comments, uh I have a motion we go into closed session. Or do you want, do you want, let's just take a, go eat and then come back for closed session?
Oh, that sounds better.
You you like that, or is the food here?
Food is here.
Okay, you want to do that? Okay.
Do we need to eat in there or right here?
No, well, what are we gonna eat?
We can eat out here for social distancing, that's what I was thinking.
That's what I was thinking. Okay, all right.
You're going to recess now?
Yeah, we're gonna recess now and have lunch and then come back and have our closed session. We're in recess at this time.